Good evening. The special meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 4:01 PM on February 8th, 2019. And good afternoon. Board members present, please state your name and I will start. Mike Ostafi, board member.
Tanya Simons, board member.
Jessica Craig, school board member.
Jackie Muscata-Jones, board member.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Kelsey.
Kelsey, school board member.
Okay. Since Kelsey has joined us through interactive television, I just wanted to read the following information from Minnesota Statute 13D .02, which requires when you do use interactive television, the following. At least one board member is physically present at the regular meeting location, and we happen to have five of the six. All board members must be able to hear and see each other, and all discussion and testimony presented at any location with at least one member present. And that is true because Kelsey is -- we tested this earlier today, so we're ready to roll. All members of the public at the regular meeting location must be able to hear and see all discussion, and we know that Kelsey's connection to us is more than adequate in all the votes of the board members. And then each location at which the board member is present must be open and accessible to the public, and I know Kelsey's in a hotel business room right now, and so that anyone could join her at that location if they so desire. So with that stated, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Ostafi. We made all those stipulations, and I made sure that Mr. Palmentier and I reviewed that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Baup. So the purpose of today's special meeting of the ISD 279 School Board is to select the next superintendent of Osseo Area Schools. Board members will name the finalists for the position of the superintendent. At this time, I would like to introduce Ken Dragseth and Patty Phillips, representatives of School Exec Connect, the search firm retained by the district. And I will now turn over to Ken and Patty to provide their recommendation about first round interview finalists.
Thank you, Mike. First of all, it's a pleasure to be at this stage of the process and to be here today to present you some candidates that we hope will be great finalists. It's been a pleasure working with this board, and sorry we missed you three, but we'll get to know you over the next couple of weeks here. It's been a great process, and the first thing I want to do is talk a little bit about who we interviewed, or who we, excuse me, who applied for this position. And I'll wait to get the document, and you can look at it. The position was advertised nationally in a variety of different things, different venues that we agreed upon by the board and by our communications people here in the Osseo Area School District. As you can see, there were 21 completed applications. What we say usually is that that's those who went through the whole process completed, gave us all the information that we did. We had a number of other people that we talked to, called us, started applications, and were discouraged by the nature of their qualifications to do this job and therefore didn't complete the application. As you can see in the gender, we had 18 males and three females. And then the positions held by the candidates, the most of these are district office people, obviously, six superintendents, two deputy soup's, deputy chief of academics, learning, leadership and learning, eight assistant associate area superintendents, one director, two, excuse me, two director of teaching and learning, one director of regional center, one district area instructional leader, and one senior associate. So basically, all of the candidates that completed the applications and so on were all district level people, either a superintendent or some role in the district office. And again, from the states, 11 of the 21 are from Minnesota, but we had candidates from pretty much from three, six, seven other states. Illinois, three. Wisconsin, two. Indiana, Louisiana, Missouri, North Carolina, and Texas had one. And all of these candidates we talked to, vetted, and are here tonight to present to you five potential candidates for going through the first round of interviews. And Patty's going to take you through that process.
You're getting a chart, and in the chart, it describes the positions these candidates currently have, the district area that they come from, the enrollment of the district where they currently work, the salary they're currently making, and their education, the highest level of education that they've attained. And I do know that one of them additionally is going for her doctorate and hasn't completed the work yet, but we just put what degree has been attained. I'm going to give you a little bit of information that we pulled from when we vet these candidates and call references and speak with references. You're also going to get a packet this evening on each of the candidates with everything they sent us in their application packet. So you'll see their college transcripts, their resumes, their letters of reference, anything they gave us. And you'll see some people turned in, you know, four reference letters, some turned in eight. We tell them there's a minimum number, and so if you wonder of the disparity there, it's just what people choose to send in. So the first candidate, and we call them candidate A, B, C, D, and E, because Minnesota data practices prohibits us from sharing the names of applicants until you finally take action to accept a slate. Okay? So a little bit about candidate A. This individual is the assistant superintendent of middle schools and student services in a very large district northwest of the Twin Cities. He previously served as an executive director of student services in that same district. And prior to doing that, he was in a director of student services in three other districts. One of them was in Wisconsin, one of them was a large east suburb of the Twin Cities, and one was a large district in southern Minnesota. He, early in his career, he got his bachelor's degree and went on to be a school psychologist, which he did in the state of Washington. He is described repeatedly as really bright, thoughtful, curious, passionate about student success, and a direct quote from one of his references was that he was the current district he's in is he's an amazing find. He's credited with a lot of large school improvement initiatives and currently did a new pre-K through 12 special education delivery model in the district that he's currently working in. His superintendent that he has now said he is in, leads with incredibly large, complex tasks, gets results, and used database decisions and collaboration to get traction and to get lasting change. His direct reports were very complimentary of him. They said he's an excellent communicator, and they love that he keeps his messages very simple, clear, and direct. And he understands in a large organization, like the one you have and the one he's working in, that oftentimes we have to over-communicate and to get people, you know, to understand. People talk about his authentic approach, which quickly builds trust and rapport, and they said he pushes them to lead and he builds trust and they feel listened to with him. A veteran principal in his current district said, "I have been in education for 30 years, and I've worked for many people, and no one gets it like this leader." He said, "I'll be honest, I don't want to lose him." So candidate A has a bachelor of science degree from Minnesota State University in Mankato. Both his master's degree and his specialist degrees are from school psychology, are from the University of Wisconsin in La Crosse. And he has a director of special ed certification from the University of Washington in Tacoma, and both his principal and superintendent certifications are from the University of Minnesota. Okay? Candidate B, do you want to do B, or do you want me to?
Go ahead. You talk to him a second.
Okay, okay. Our second candidate has been the director of teaching and learning in a suburb south of the Twin Cities for the last 10 years. He is one of those individuals that has come up through the system. He taught in the system. He was a social studies teacher, then he was elevated, promoted to be a dean, and after that, he was an assistant principal, and finally, he was a middle school principal. And now he's the director level. This is a district that does not have assistant superintendents or associate superintendents. References say he's so calm and compassionate and friendly and approachable and caring. He lifts people up. They say he has a really dry sense of humor that makes him really relatable to everyone. His teachers' union president says he's a person of high integrity who puts students first. He's really respected where he is, and he has a great relationship with the school board members, the staff, and the community. He's complimented for being innovative and thorough and well-researched, and when the situation warrants it, I'm describing him as being this really pleasant person, he can be decisive, so he can make decisions and take a stand always for students. He communicates clearly and concisely, excellent follow-through, bills consensus by really, really listening to people, and I love, somebody said he respectfully dignifies multiple perspectives. His leadership style always underscores the why of an initiative, and in doing so, he gets these relationships with people and the buy-in that we often need, and then the stakeholders feel appreciated and valued and empowered when they move on. Through his leadership, a quote was that "our district continues to be a benchmark of excellence that draws many families to reside in our community." He received his bachelor's degree magna cum laude from Concordia College in Moorhead. His master's degree, sixth year certificate, and his specialist degree and superintendent licensure are all from the Minnesota State University in Mankato. Okay? Candidate C, our third candidate, is an assistant superintendent, serving for the fifth year in a Twin Cities urban district. And before this position, she was both an elementary principal and a middle school principal in this same district. She was also an elementary school principal and a high school principal in the state of Georgia. And prior to that, she was back in Minnesota in a different large urban district, and she was an alternative school, high school principal, a reading coordinator, and a middle school social studies teacher. So she did time in Minnesota and had three different roles, then she went to Georgia and had a couple of different roles, and now she's back here. References call her an equity leader, and she always creates space for other voices, and I love that description of somebody. And she stretches you, they said, to believe in yourself and holds you to the highest expectations, just as she holds herself to high expectations. A principal in her current district describes her warmth and authenticity and says that she is impeccable with her words at all times, and he appreciates a key reminder, kind of a mantra that she says over and over to the staff, "We are here for all students." One of her district's former superintendents said that this leader uses data to analyze performance disparities to develop a platform for improvement, and while he compliments her for being inspirational and cheerful, this individual said she's able to make tough decisions when it benefits students, but always seeks that common ground first and consensus when she's dealing with competing interests. Her current superintendent describes her instincts and problem skills, touts her as a community builder, and goes on to say this, "I have worked with dozens of leaders in three very large school districts, and I place this candidate at the top of readiness in ability to be your superintendent of schools." And she received her bachelor of arts degree and master's degrees from the University of Minnesota and her administrator licensure from St. Mary's University, and she's nearly done with the doctorate, but not far enough that I could chuck it off the list. Okay? Candidate D, our fourth candidate, is currently in his fourth year as a superintendent in a district southwest of the Twin Cities. Previous to this, he was an executive director of secondary education and K-12 curriculum assessment and technology in a suburb just east of the Twin Cities. He started his career as an elementary teacher, and then he was a technology integration specialist, and he is an adjunct professor at Concordia. He teaches HR and finance in the graduate program. His references again say this individual is so well-read, so personable, so bright, and very visible. They said he expresses himself eloquently. He's in the classrooms and the schools continually, very, very visible, and he gives encouragement, feedback, and guidance to the staff, and the staff really appreciate his presence in their classrooms and in their schools. A school board member says he's so highly motivated and passionate and dynamic, and he leads with, always with fiscal soundness, and that he has integrity, and he does what's best for students, and makes any kind of tough decision, again, if it's best for students and the growth of the district. He's been credited with bridging a gap that was in this district before he came here and the community trusting the district, and they were, he shaped, he shaped their admin team, and they were very complimentary of how he's brought them together. And a principal said, "He's the most intelligent and well-read, well-read person I've ever worked with. He shaped our admin team and encouraged us to become visionaries. We've moved farther, or further than we've ever thought we could or dreamed under his leadership." And he has a bachelor's degree from St. Cloud State University, an admin licensure from the U of M, and his master's degree superintendent licensure and doctorate are all from St. Mary's University. Our final candidate, candidate E, is the superintendent in a large district in Missouri. And previously, he spent 12 years in a district where he moved up through the ranks. He was, it was a diverse suburban district in Missouri, and he was high school principal, that's how he was hired there. Then he moved up to area superintendent, and then deputy superintendent, and finally superintendent, and he did that all in 12 years. They obviously saw this was a man that was very skilled. He started his career as an educational, a substitute teacher and a band director. And he is very proud, and you will see it on his resume, and he told me about it. When he started teaching, he taught, his first teaching job that wasn't a substitute job, was in the district where he currently is superintendent right now. And he opened this high school, the high school opened there, and he was the, it just opened the year, he was there, and he was the band director in that, in that school. And he said that they named him their very first teacher of the year, and is very proud of that. So that was way back when. His board president was effusive about this individual in her praise. She said he came to the district with this message, and they were in a position where they needed some work. And his message was one of unity and excellence and relationships, and he has delivered. She said he eliminated the confusion in the areas where it mattered most, and that he puts children at the center of his work, he builds trust easily, and he brings a community together to get this kind of common thread that we all need and move forward in a positive way with the things that matter most. During his tenure, he has a lot of accomplishments. He, they were, had some financial issues, and he was able to lead the charge to do their own transportation, and they now save a half a million dollars a year owning their own buses and doing transportation on their own. He led the directive to balance the budget and to get that fund balance and restore the reserve funds without a tax, tax increase. He energized the curriculum management with funding issues. Sometimes you don't fund the curriculum areas that you should, took care of that. And he successfully passed $164 million bond to, with overwhelming public support, to do the things that they needed to do to their facilities. His direct reports say that he's innovative, he's inspiring and visible. He's the epitome of a true servant leader with a heart for the work that we do and with a heart for children. His references say he has powerful communication skills and creates relationships with every single person that intersects with him. One of his principals asked his fellow administrators, they were in the hallway, and they were asking, he asked this kind of crew of administrators, "Have you ever had a boss that you would, like, run through a wall for?" And they all nodded and pointed to this leader and said, "We have one now." Candidate E received his bachelor's degree in music from Webster University, his master's degree in ed administration from Lindenwood University, and his educational doctorate from St. Louis University in St. Louis, Missouri. So those are the five candidates that are brought forward. We had a wonderful process doing screening interviews with your board members, your HR executive director, your interim superintendent, and ourselves, and it was a valuable process. And I want to thank all the people that help make this district hum, because you are a well-oiled piece of machinery here. There's a lot of input and a lot of, we do, we do these searches a certain way, and you have added interesting dimensions and other components to it that are making it your own, and we appreciate the work of everybody. And I'm smiling at those two over there, and Laurel, and your whole crew. So we appreciate working with you. So what we would need at this point is probably a motion and then some discussion, and it's your pleasure, should you choose to accept these five candidates, or revise as you see fit. And when it's all done, we'll release the names of them, and you'll get bios with their packets, and you'll see who's whom that I was speaking of.
So they need a motion and a second on the table to accept this slate, and then they can ask questions and have discussion.
Yeah. Once the motion has been approved, then we're free to share personal information about their names.
But the discussion would come before that.
Yeah, right.
And any question about the candidates.
Any questions they have about the candidates that we can answer.
All right, okay. I just wanted to make, be clear about that.
Right.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the recommendations as provided by School Exec Connect to move forward the slate as provided to first round interviews?
So moved.
Moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Muscata-Jones. Any discussion?
Discussion and questions. Kelsey?
Yeah. I, thank you so much for the work. It was really thorough, and it sounds like there's some really strong candidates, so I'm looking forward to the interviews. You know, I was just asking, you know, we had eight slots open, and there were 21 candidates being screened. So I'm just wondering, you know, were the numbers, like, six, seven, eight, were they just not, why didn't they make that to the final round? Like, why, why do we only have five, not eight?
I think what we, what we tried to do, number one, and we screened 10 people, and narrowed down to those that best fit the profile that you established. And I think there was general consensus that these five best meant that, that the others, obviously, good administrators in their own right, but didn't quite match the profile that you established, as these five did. And we did not, we always would encourage the board never to bring people back if they're not, we feel, a serious candidate. That's not fair to the candidate, and it's not fair to the process. So we had a lot of deliberation on this, and I think we're at, we all, I think, pretty much agree that at least the people who were there, that these five meet that, and we can find an excellent superintendent out of these five.
Could I just add? Kelsey, I think an important piece of that, not bringing forward three additional candidates would be that-
I can't tell who's talking, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Heather.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she can't see everybody.
Okay. Sorry about that, Kelsey. I just wanted to add that we wouldn't want to bring forward three candidates that we weren't confident fit the profile and have their names publicly released, because that could negatively impact their current careers, if we already know that they don't fit our profile as well as the other candidates do.
So you guys were at, like, 100% consensus of the five?
Yes.
Like, there was anybody else that anybody wanted to bring forward that?
Well, they're being brought forward by School Exec Connect.
Right, yeah, right. We took the input from the three members of the board. We, the board met these in an hour session, and they had their resumes and so on. So we had a good discussion about each of the candidates. Patty and I have interviewed all of the candidates, 21 people we interviewed and know these people, and come to the conclusion, based on our best recommendation, that these five are the best that you'd want, and will, as you know, in Minnesota, it's private until the slate is pushed. I would agree, we do not want to put candidates in a position in a public forum that we don't feel that would best match your district.
And I do believe we set eight time slots aside-
Right.
-if we did get eight.
Right.
But there was never a target of eight. It was there just for planning purposes.
That, that, that was Mike. What Mike said, Kelsey, can you hear me, Kelsey? Okay. What Mike said is, the eight slots were originally planned just to make sure we had adequate time, in case we did have eight. If we would have had, let's say, 50, 60 candidates apply, we may have screened it down to eight. That may have been the right number of people that fit. It may have been seven, or it may have been nine. So if we would have found 10 people that, you know, felt, fit that profile, then search exec would have brought all 10, regardless of our eight slots. It's, it'd be, it's going to be analogous to your finalists. We've prepared three full days for finalists, but when you go through this process, you might only choose two. Or you, as a board, after you interview, should you accept this slate, you might, after your first round interview next week, you might choose nobody. And then we're back to ground zero, and we go back to recast the net and see what happens. So that structure is just out there to ensure that we've provided ample time for people to come forward, and you have a schedule then that we can adhere to. Our schedule was designed by me, not by anybody else, so I'm trying to defend it the best I can.
I guess I'm just sensitive to, we all know this is the biggest, really, decision that we make as board members. Three of us are new, and so that's why I always, you know, I understand the rationale of why you don't, you know, you don't need to fill the eight spots or whatever. I just want to, you know, I just didn't know, like, the difference between, like, somebody who's ranked five and six. Is it because, is it objective, is it subjective, is it be based, like, on personality, or is it based on, you know, like, just a judgment that is, like, no number, you know, the difference between, like, the fifth and the sixth ranked person is, I mean, because they don't have a certain degree, or their school isn't big enough, or they're, they're, whatever, like, you know, the demographics don't match our district? Like, I'm just trying to, I just want to know what that, kind of, just to explain to me that cutoff of what, what differentiates the top five from the next, maybe, three or four.
I think, I think we go back, and I always go back to the profile, because finding a superintendent for any district, now Osseo, is a match. And do this, does this person, might be a very good administrator, might be a finalist in another district or whatever, obviously got hired into some district, so, but we're looking to find the best match. And as we did, all our things, we felt they were potential match, you know, with the 10 that we brought in, and then in, you know, a good grilling of the board and a good discussion of that process, felt that there was a definite cutoff at five. And so we never tell the board, "You need to take X number." We come in, we've been in searches where we've had three, we've been in searches where we've had eight. But it's all about whether you have the right people that we feel will have a, be a strong potential to be the next superintendent of your district. And it's, yes, in some ways, it's subjective, yes. We don't have a, you know, if you don't have a certain degree, you can't come in. No, it's, it's looking at the totality of their resume and their background and their experience, their interviews with us, all of that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I am curious as to how you decided on the five. Was there a ranking system, or what was used to determine the final five?
The, how it works in Minnesota, the board doesn't make that decision.
That's right.
We do. Okay? And so what we need to do, and that's what we've done in the last couple of weeks, is to seek the input of the board. But Patty and I, after all of the input sessions that we had with the board, knowing more about these candidates probably than the board was able to acquire in a little session, felt that these were the strongest. And that's, that's Minnesota process, Minnesota law.
To be clear, what I'm hearing is, using our criteria that we established as part of this process, what we discussed previously was important to us, through a thorough assessment, qualitative and quantitatively in terms of those requirements, this is your best assessment and recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think we have to remember, when we designed our, our search process, the search firm was- the search firm was always going to bring us, or you, excuse me, a slate of candidates. And, and we created our own little niche in there to, to also invoke some participation by board members in that screening process. I can tell you, in the district, I retired from two years ago, the board was not involved in that. The firm brought in their seven candidates, or six candidates, and the board went from there, with the same kind of process of, of, you know, no public names and reviewing short bios on those people. Your first chance to get your arms around these people are really in those interviews next week. And that will become, you know, you'll get packets of information if you do endorse this slate today, as Patty and Ken have talked about. And then you've got homework to do over the weekend, and then the interviews will be your chance to really assess, as a six-member board, do you have the right people in front of you? So, again, this is their recommendation coming to you, and, and we did seek some input along the way, which we had created, so.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say thank you to the superintendent committee for their time. I know that was additional time and long days, so thank you for that, and thank you to your team as well, and I'll be supporting the slate.
All right. Thank you, Director Craig. Yeah, it was amazing. It was during both snowstorms, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
So any other discussion, any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I just would add that I, hearing the descriptions, I really was impressed at how well-fitting they sound at this stage with the criteria that we established, and I really appreciated both the description of their, their resume criteria, as well as who, who you were describing them based on their letters of recommendation, character qualities as well. And that's really important to me and I think to the process, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Kelsey, I just, because I know you're, you're not a silent partner there, but I just want to make sure that we come back to you if you have some other questions, or...
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I would, I've already stated that I think that I have no issue with the candidates. I just, you know, I guess I would, you know, look at my colleagues, you know, from the three, ones that were the three board members who were part of this reading process, I mean, I just want to have a, I mean, is this something, are these a slate of candidates that you guys strongly, because I know it wasn't your choice, but I mean, you also would concur that this would be, knowing our district and some of the huge barriers that we have.
You know, I, I think we all got to give our input into this process. Kelsey, if, want to make sure you can hear me, we all gave input into this process, and I, I think, you know, based upon who we see here, at least with the descriptions, that this is a strong slate. Yes.
And Kelsey, I would like to add that I am very encouraged by all five of these candidates.
Yes, Kelsey, sorry if you don't mind.
It's Heather.
Yes, sorry, I forgot you can't see me. I would say absolutely these five candidates are all, at this stage, well-fitting and suited to continue in the process, and I think that we're lucky to have had them apply.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Good, with that, let's get on to the vote. So there's a vote to approve the slate of candidates that are being brought forward. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Kelsey?
Oh, sorry, aye.
All right, so we don't have an aye. It's six, nothing. We have approved that slate. So Dr. Baugh, Dr. Ragseth, and Ms. Phillips, can you please, please provide us an overview of the next steps?
Yep. Okay, the, what you're getting now, interview scheduled for next week, you're getting the document that we, the one sheet that we sent you before, but you got all the information that Patty just talked about, so you'll be able to read that, too. And, and, like I said, the schedule and the names of who they are, and I will say those for the public so that you have them. At, starting next week, Monday, on February 11th, at 3:30 is the first interview. It's Mr. Corey McIntyre, who is the associate superintendent in Inoka-Hennepin School District. At 4:30 will be Mr. Stephen Tron, the director of teach and learning in the Rosemont Apple Valley Egan School District. At 6:15 will be Mrs. Lisa Sales Adams, who is an assistant superintendent in the St. Paul Public Schools. At 7:15 is Dr. Ryan Lager, who is superintendent in Belle Plaine Public Schools. And then Tuesday, February 12th, at 3 o'clock PM, is Dr. Eric Knost, superintendent of the Rockwood School District in St. Louis, Missouri.
So to be clear, we are not interviewing on the 14th.
That's correct.
What happened is, we have one candidate who could not make the 11th or the 14th work, and so we tried to work around that, and I've always used that board meeting date as a possible fallback. And that's the way it, as Patty and Ken contacted people to make sure that they were interested in going to the next step, and when would they be available for interviewing, because they had outlined for each of the candidates at the beginning of the process, the timeline and all of that. And we had candidate E. there, Dr. Eric Knost, who's the one who could not be here on either one of our days. And so I gave up my schedule here, but providing the weather is okay next Tuesday, because I'm not feeling really good about it, as I've seen it in the, in the weather piece. I, we had to schedule him for Tuesday, and I thought if everyone could, you'll have to look at your calendars and let us know if that would work. Kelsey, it's at 3 o'clock on Tuesday. We would interview him before your board meeting that afternoon, and then you could grab a quick bite, and then we'd have the board meeting thereafter. If, if, if that fits everyone's schedule, what we would do at the board meeting then is have our regular board meeting with the agenda items that have been posted out there. But since you will have seen all the five candidates, then I would suggest we add to the board agenda your discussion then of ranking and deciding, do you have the right candidate, and if so, who should move on to that, that final, I call it the full-day event, because it's more than just an interview. And so Patty would be present that evening. You'd do the regular board meeting, that would be the last agenda item, and we'll go, they'll go through a process with you, and you'll have all the feedback from your interviews, your own assessment, because if we did Eric that day, we will do the analysis and compilation of his feedback while we're having a sandwich and then getting ready for the board meeting. So we'd lay all that out for you that evening, and then she will work through you with the process that night to select if anybody that would move on. So we'd be able to finish it up Tuesday night.
There's a no, I mean, no Friday morning.
We, we wouldn't need Thursday, and we wouldn't need Friday morning.
I like that.
Okay.
I only have a small schedule conflict. I wouldn't be able to get here until 3:30 that day.
3:30 will work. We'll make 3:30 work.
Okay, that's it.
We'll make 3:30 work. 3:30, Kelsey.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or items?
I think we're, we're good. Jim have some other comments he wants to make?
No, I guess next steps, if you want to continue on that on Monday. We've sent a compilation of questions to Patty and Ken. I, I, I've been so busy with weather right now, I'm not sure if Laurel got back to you or not, but I think we have the questions ready to go. Thank you for all your input. A number of you, all of you, took time to, to provide some suggestions. So that interview is totally your interview, and we will take those questions that evening and have you probably rotate them around the table and share those questions. And I think we've scheduled the interviews for 45-minute slots, knowing that they might cascade a little bit longer than that. And although I would say in the screening process, people, they were very good, succinct yet thorough at the same time, so. And then we'll have a feedback form for our audience set up, for those in the audience, and also for those who are watching the web stream of it. And then at the end of each candidate, there's an open period of time when the web stream people that can, online can put in their feedback, and then, as I said, we'll start compiling that information for you on each candidate. You will have a busy Monday afternoon and evening, but I think it'll be a good, a, a good, I'm looking forward to it, like Jackie said, I am looking forward to seeing how these people progress through your process. And again, we talked about the process, and on Tuesday, for determining if you want any of these to be a finalist. I know they're called finalists already, because as a board, once you're the hiring authority, name finalists, they're a finalist. And so we'll go through that process, and then we move on to scheduling those people. Patty and Ken then, after Tuesday night, would call those individuals, get them on the schedule, and then we would have that information posted and obviously confirmed with you, whether it's two, three, whatever it happens to be. And then at that time, would spend some time going through, reviewing that schedule with you, probably Tuesday night, so that you're ready to go for that following week. So I think with that said, is there anything else? Patty, Ken?
We've given you this document, and it more or less says what, what he just said.
Just, read as you leisure.
Read as you leisure, absolutely. And there's one sheet in there about committee instructions, it's for your groups, about illegal questions to ask, and-
That's for the second round.
Your team has been so wonderful in setting everything up that it would be redundant to go over any of this, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one thing, please.
We're excited about the next step, and we'll, yes.
Just one thing, I just want to clear, for community feedback, that would be open around 3:30 for that first interview?
Yes.
And then it would close probably Tuesday before the school board meeting?
After each interview, the electronic piece, we have to close down so that we can start tabulating, otherwise they run into each interview. So, Barb's behind the screen.
Right.
Barb, did you want to answer that?
Each survey will open 15 minutes before the person's interview and close 30 minutes after.
Okay.
Can I, can you?
So I will repeat that. So for each interview, 15 minutes before the interview, the survey will be open, it will close a half an hour after the interview.
And then the audience ones will collect, you know, as the interview is finished, as they, they finish their input, then we'll collect those. That was the same process you used last time.
Thank you.
And we're going to distribute these. These are all the application materials for the five candidates. Keep these close to your vest. When, when candidates are eliminated, you will bring them back to the district office, and they're shredded, because there's confidential information.
Okay.
And you can keep, the district can keep the ones that are the successful candidate.
And Kelsey, we'll have this packet, as you and I talked this morning, we'll have this packet for you ready Monday when you are back.
Okay.
Back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you, directors. Any final thoughts, questions?
I just wanted to say a huge thank you to both Ken and Patty for all your hard work on this and bringing forward some really excellent candidates, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. With that, our last agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Don't.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Thanks, guys.